Good evening and welcome to our February 7th Board of Education meeting. I'd like to call on Board Member Alan Charaus to open us up.
Good evening. Would you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated.
Thank you. First, we will recognize our February Employee of the Month, and hers is a familiar face in this boardroom. Lisa Nolan, will you please come to the podium? Her job requires her to be behind the scenes, but Lisa Nolan's excellent work has landed her squarely in the spotlight. Lisa, the Director of Board Relations, was named the February Guilford County School Employee of the Month. A member of the superintendent's team, Lisa was recognized for her dedication, courteousness, and attention to detail. She was nominated by Board Member T. Diane Bellamy Small, who wrote, "Miss Nolan has shouldered her tremendous responsibilities to the Board and Superintendent with the highest level of professionalism. She is meticulous and hardworking. She goes above and beyond to make sure that Board business is appropriately handled. She works late, weekends, and whenever she is needed. Lisa's work is very important to the district and her efforts are not always recognized. She handles herself with grace and a quiet strength that should be commended. I am proud and honored to recognize her selfless contributions to Guilford County Schools and to the community. She is one of our unsung heroes in Guilford County Schools. Lisa received a $50 gift card courtesy of the Greensboro J.C.'s, which generously sponsors the Employee of the Month program. Your photo will be displayed at the district's central offices, so you can see yourself every day when you come in, and at the Greensboro J.C.'s office during the month of February. At this time, I'd like to ask Board Member T. Diane Bellamy Small to read aloud the certificate honoring Lisa.
Madam Chair, if you don't mind, I have yielded that to our new at-large member, and he's going to do that.
Thank you.
To someone who among her many gifts is an excellent guide to new board members. Guilford County Board of Education Certificate of Recognition presented to Lisa Nolan, Superintendent's Office for Employee of the Month, sponsored by Greensboro J.C.'s, February 2023.
So you know how this goes, right?
So, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Dr. Oakley. I'd like to take this time to thank you all for this recognition. I am truly honored. I'd also like to thank my colleagues who work nights and weekends right alongside me and deserve this honor probably more than I do. Last but not least, I do have to give a special thanks to Board Member T. Diane Bellamy Small for her nomination. It really is an awesome feeling to know that your work is seen and appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'd like to congratulate you, and I know your family members are here and any friends and your colleagues. We'd love to all congratulate them as well. Well, that was wonderful. Thank you again, Diane. Next, we will recognize our Volunteer of the Month for February. Would Mrs. Donna Klein, please come to the podium at this time? Mrs. Klein has been a valuable resource for the staff and students at Shady Brook Elementary. Mrs. Klein volunteers every day for most of the school day. She assists our first-grade students, helping them stay on task by encouraging them and rewarding them with kind words, stickers, smiles, and hugs. Mrs. Klein works with small groups of children, helping them learn letters, words, numbers, or addition and subtraction facts. She reminds them to be good listeners and to do their best. When Mrs. Klein sees a need, she fills it. Mrs. Klein once noticed one of our students did not have a lunch bag and provided the little girl with a brand-new lunch bag by the end of the week. She even brings in books for our students and gives them activity books to take home to practice their reading and math skills. Mrs. Klein is generous with her time and her resources. She has a positive attitude and a willing spirit. "You name it, and she has probably helped with it. We love and appreciate her," says Miss Summers, first-grade teacher and Principal Zayem, who nominated her. "It is a pleasure to recognize you, Mrs. Klein, as the February 2023 Guilford County Schools Volunteer of the Month." As Volunteer of the Month, you were surprised with a $50 gift card courtesy of Rice Toyota, and during the month of February, your photo will be displayed at the district's central offices. So just come by anytime, sit in the lobby, Shady Brook Elementary and Rice Toyota. At this time, I'd like to ask Board Member Chrissy Pratt to present Mrs. Klein with a certificate of recognition. So I have a special love for Shady Brook because not only is it in District 2, which is my neighborhood, but my youngest son went there right when we moved to High Point eight years ago now. And a wonderful school, and volunteers really make our schools go round, and we appreciate everything you do. So your certificate says Guilford County Board of Education Certificate of Recognition, presented to Donna Klein, Shady Brook Elementary, for Volunteer of the Month, February 2023, and it's signed by our Superintendent Dr. Oakley and our Chairperson Deana Hayes. So congratulations.
Thank you. I want to say thank you for letting me be a volunteer, because it means something to me. It's my heart, okay? I love every one of them. I love all the teachers. Honey, I love all of you. So thank you.
Thank you, and we would like to shake your hand, and if you have any family members or any of the Shady Brook family that's here with you, we'd love to also congratulate them and thank them. And finally tonight, we honor a group of employees who are critical to preparing our students for life beyond the classroom. February 6th through the 13th is National School Counseling Week, and this year's theme is Helping Students Dream Big. Our 225 Guilford County School counselors certainly do that. They help students develop their social and emotional strength, learn to problem-solve, and develop healthy habits. Counselors also play a key role in helping students find their calling and choosing courses and programs that can best prepare them for that calling. We are grateful to our school counselors for investing in the lives of our students, not just this week, but throughout the year. Please take time this week to thank a school counselor. At this time, I'd like to ask Board Member Deborah Napper to read aloud the proclamation on behalf of National School Counseling Week.
Absolutely. Whereas school counselors are employed in public schools to help students reach their full potential, and whereas school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents as these traits relate to career awareness and development, and whereas school counselors help parents focus on ways to further the educational, personal, and social growth of their children, and whereas school counselors work with teachers and other educators to help students explore their potential and set realistic goals for themselves, and whereas school counselors seek to identify and utilize community resources that can enhance and complement comprehensive school counseling programs and help students become productive members of society, and whereas comprehensive developmental school counseling programs are considered an integral part of the educational process that enables all students to achieve success in schools. Now, therefore, the Guilford County Board of Education does hereby proclaim February 6th through the 10th of 2023 as National School Counseling Week in Guilford County Schools and commends its observance to all students, staff, and families. Signed this the 7th day of February in 2023 by Deana Hayes, our Board Chair, and our Superintendent, Dr. Whitney Oakley.
Thank you, and I believe we have some school counselors in the audience. Would you please stand so that we can recognize you here? Thank you so much. 225 counselors, 70, 60-some thousand students. That's a big job, so thank you so much for all that you do above and beyond the call of duty. So thank you. We are now at public comments as we are preparing to call our first speaker, Dennis Quaintance. I would like to remind our speakers tonight that you have three minutes when you come up. When the amber light comes on, you have 15 seconds left, so please wrap up your comments so that we can hear the next speakers in line. So thank you. Welcome, Mr. Quaintance, and if you can start by saying your name and address.
Oh, my name is Dennis Quaintance, and I live at 412 Fisher Park Circle, Unit C in Greensboro. Well, thank you, Madam Chair, the Board. I'm Dennis Quaintance, and I'm honored to lead an employee-owned restaurant and hotel company here in Greensboro. I walk by here all the time on my way back from work, and I notice people voicing their ideas, so I thought I'd drop by and share some ideas about your building programs, because I've built some buildings. I have some things to say. So what came to mind is to share what Margaret Mead, the anthropologist, said. She said, "Never underestimate the power of a small group of committed people to change the world." In fact, that's the only thing that ever has. I don't doubt that Guilford County Schools will do a remarkable job of deploying the large amount of money dedicated for construction in the coming years, even while progressing on ambitious initiatives such as one that's important to me, and that's improving early literacy. Having built some buildings, I thought I would share some ideas of some things that I've learned that I hope might be helpful. And I'm certainly not telling you what you should do. What I am doing is sharing, if I were you, these are things that I would consider in your processes. I would recognize that good design is almost always... Good design and construction teams can build really good buildings, but only with great clients. So I would employ methods to ensure that we are really good clients to the design and build process. I'd learn how to be a great client. I'd attempt to build and refurbish buildings that are likely to be useful in 100 years. Buildings are torn down because they become functionally obsolete or because they ugly out. And we can avoid buildings uglying out by being careful with proportions and materials. I'd endeavor to be a pragmatist. I'd blend pragmatism with idealism. I'd remember that many of the things that the U.S. Green Building Council employs in their leadership in energy and environmental design, their LEED program, are really synonyms for duh. They just make sense. We built a LEED platinum building in Greensboro 15 years from now, and not only do we not have any regrets, we're just delighted with the outcomes we got from the sustainable practices we employed. I'd set ambitious goals, and I'd even consider applying a model like this that may be applying seven years of projected energy and water savings to the building budgets. I know that's difficult, that this money lives in different buckets, but money is money, operating money and capital money. And that's what we did when we justified adding about $3 million to our budget. I would build a client team that included experts, the usual experts, but also a sustainable practices generalist, a practical person that's enthusiastic about it, an energy expert, obviously, an architectural historian, a behavioral scientist, and an artist. And I'm done. Let's set a precedent. Thank you very much. I'm honored to be here. Thank you.
Cherry Pickett, followed by Michael Logan. Welcome.
Welcome. Cherry Pickett, 7804 Robinson Road, Summerfield. Good evening. I'm here tonight on my own validity. No one has asked me to speak or given me suggestions on what to say. Former Board Member McGregor said at a November meeting that most of you are religious, spiritual, moral, and have integrity, and that's good to hear. It means that you'll be honest, fair, and follow county policy to fill your vacant District 3 seat. Parents need to have someone supporting their children's schools and be there if they need anything. Michael Logan is qualified, ready, and willing to fill the seat to represent District 3. He has integrity and has been committed to his students in fulfilling teacher responsibilities for many years. Mr. Logan does not speak misinformation in a consistent manner, as was said on TV. It's probable that he is disagreeing with something or someone, which is not the same. If a decision to appoint someone to a board or to hire someone for a job is based on some words that they may have said in the past that someone deemed offensive, then none of us would have a job or be able to serve on any boards. As Jesus said in the Bible to the Pharisees who were getting ready to stone a woman caught in adultery, "He who is without sin among you, let him be the first to throw a stone at her." Thanks.
Thank you. Michael Logan, followed by Sonalini Sapra. Hope I got that right. Welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Pickett. Hard to speak after that. In November, I was appointed to be the District 3 Chair, and it is my expectations to be the District 3 Chair. November, there was 8,480 students in District 3. I'm going to stand here to hear the representation for District 3 tonight. And I have 2 minutes and 30 seconds left. The silence is deafening.
Thank you.
As a school board member, it would have been my expectation for y'all to stand up for your students.
Mr. Logan, your time is up. Thank you. Sonalini Sapra, followed by David Gleason. Welcome.
Hello. Thank you. My name is Sonalini Sapra, and I live at 3011 Robin Hood Drive, and thank you for allowing me to speak today. So I'm a local parent and a volunteer with a coalition here in Greensboro called Greensboro Solar Power Now Coalition, and we would like to request that the forthcoming upgrades to the Guilford County Schools fall in line with the long overdue timeline of transition to full renewable energy usage. These proposals are not simply a good idea, they're a necessity. The only way we get past the worst effects of human-induced climate change is through policy decisions. From the White House all the way down to Guilford County School Boards, it's about policy decisions, and each policy matters. You have the power within your tenure here to make that kind of decision. Otherwise, we're ensuring our children will face a future defined by unprecedented natural disasters, resource scarcity, displacement, and war. Non-action right now is not just a missed opportunity that can be picked up at a later date. It's an active endorsement and enabling of the climate violence that these same children, mine and yours, will see and suffer. This is not hyperbole. The United Nations Intergovernment Panel on Climate Change has given us less than a decade to make these types of decisions. We know that you are currently in the process of updating your policy regarding GCS energy and natural resource conservation. We ask that you improve this policy by adding commitments to: 1. Transition to 100% clean energy by 2050; 2. Design construction projects to lead Silver Standards at a minimum; and 3. Have the Superintendent report on progress annually. I've been living in Greensboro now for five years, and I've been working with this coalition for about the last four, and we have never been as hopeful as we are today that Guilford County will make significant progress towards becoming one of the greenest counties in North Carolina, if not the United States and the world. But we need you to act. We owe our children, mine and yours, the right to inherit a livable world. Thank you so much.
Thank you. David Gleason, followed by Tanya Martin. Welcome.
Good evening. I am David Gleason. I live in North High Point in Jamestown. I'm here to speak to you this evening as Chairman of the Guilford County Republican Party. I spoke to you in January and implored you to appoint Michael Logan to fill the District 3 vacancy. You chose not to do that. At that time, I suggested to you that the Guilford County Republican Party would review its options to see what we could do to move this forward. I'm pleased to report to you tonight that we have a solution. This statute is a legislative document. To fix it, it will require legislative action. We reached out to our Legislative Representative, Mr. John Hardester. We've explained our situation to Mr. Hardester. He has researched it. He understands what we would like to have completed. I believe he has consulted with legal counsel and the General Assembly, and he agrees with our position. It is not my position here tonight to speak for Mr. Hardester or the General Assembly. What I can tell you is that we have asked for the statute to be corrected and the language cleaned up so that there's no misunderstanding, there's no perceived ambiguity that points to the fact of how a vacancy will be filled. I'm going to read to you from the current statute which will carry over. "If a vacating member was elected as the nominee of a political party, then the person or board or commission required to fill that vacancy shall consult with the county executive committee of that party and appoint..." Let me read through that again. "...and appoint the person recommended by the party executive committee." What I can tell you is that that paragraph will survive in the new document. So we are presenting an option to you, which would be available in several weeks, I believe, for your consideration. There obviously is another option, and it's very simple. It's what I said in January. If you believe this statement and document and the statute is correct, then we can resolve this this evening, make this contentious fiasco go away. Appoint Michael Logan to fill the District 3 vacancy, then this issue is resolved. I will leave you with one final thought. Very wise man by the name of B.J. Barnes wrote a letter to the editor. It was very simple. Seat the man. Thank you.
Thank you. Tanya Martin, followed by Allen Dale Hall. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Tanya Martin. I reside at 1 St. Cory Place, Greensboro, North Carolina, 27410. Thought I could read this. 50 comes at you fast. Okay. So, Madam Chair, Superintendent, and members of the Board, thank you for your service to our county and all of our children. Your decisions have been considerate and caring, and then too often disregarded interest of the common good. I appreciate many perspectives must be accommodated, and trust your decisions will continue to be thoughtful, knowing all students are entitled to a fair and equitable education with their dignity and potential respected. I know a particularly difficult decision for some of you was not to seat Mr. Logan, and I think that it was the right decision not to seat a policymaker with publicly stated prejudice against the students that he would be sworn to serve. It is an important stand for equity in decision-making, and it was fair. I also want to affirm its importance and remind everyone, yours was not a decision to create or yield power. It was a decision to prevent powerful bias from policymaking positions. It was to stand not against a man or a party, but against bigotry. Bigotry no child, our parent, our community member should have to endure to those who are sworn to treat all children with respect and care. It was to stand for equality and the common good, so I want to thank you. As a Black woman, when I have read some of his social media posts, it was very cringe-worthy. I was bullied in school. I remember having the stare-down contests that I was kind of reminded of a few minutes ago, and I don't think that... I think that as a private citizen, having your opinions are great, and I think that you can say... and I think that you can say whatever you like. But as a public servant, I think that you have to show more respect to all people. Guilford County School data show the presence of racial hierarchy in all measures of success and well-being. Board members have much work to do to ensure these gaps closed and it is well documented that doing so is to the benefit of all children of any race and does not need to play out in the binary of winners and losers. Yes, all children can do well and the care, help, and support of children of color does not make white children unimportant or less than full members of our human family. This important work must be our focus. Thank you for continuing to show Guilford County that you are doing just that. Thank you.
Thank you. Allen Dale Hall, followed by Shirley Van Story. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you Guilford County School Board. I applaud you for the work you've done in the past. I look forward to working with you in the future. My name's Allen Dale Hall. I live at 1213 Otmore Drive in Greensboro. I'm here as the lead representative for Cottage Grove Neighborhood Association. My subject this evening is to speak to you about the vacant Hampton School building, which is right in the middle of my district. We started off as children there. It was one of the first places before we built our church at New Hope on English Street. That's where I used to go as a kid on Saturday and Sunday for church. I left Greensboro, went to the Marine Corps and got back and the tornado hit. In 2018, it tore the school completely. The roof is gone. It is a very desolate area, but myself and the community see great things that can be done with the area. This evening, I'd just like to bring forward some of the recommendations for my community. One would be a wellness center. Somewhere where young kids could go and take care of the healthy parts of growing up without playing in the streets. My district is one of the poorest districts in Greensboro. If you ride through, you'll see where the kids are playing. There's a restricted area over there now where they can't go. We're also plagued with our park and Bingham Park where we're working on some things where the tornado also hit and now the kids are restricted to play there. I don't want to see my young kids grow up and have to go to other neighborhoods to play that puts them in jeopardy and being low income, the parents can't drive over to see them. So we're putting the kids in a situation where I think they could flourish more if we had a community center, a Boys and Girls Club. Things where they can learn more about education. We can have healthcare programs. And we as a community can monitor the activities of our kids. I think this would cut down on some of the crime. The poor health where you notice in the east side of Greensboro, we have a high rate of health problems. And I just think we could be considered to have an option on what goes on with Hampton School. I really appreciate what you're doing and I hope that you'll consider what we are asking for in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Shirley Van Story, followed by Kelly Reese. Welcome.
Good evening, School Board, Madam Chair. My name is Shirley Van Story and I live at 4308 Bellfield Drive in Greensboro, North Carolina. I am also with Mr. Hall here from Cottage Grove Community. I grew up in Cottage Grove Community and with Hampton School and it's kind of disappointing that there was said that there would not be, will not rebuild the school there. And I'm kind of concerned because in the area in northeast Greensboro, you have closed down Hampton School, Irving Elementary, which was a Montessori school. And now all of the kids seem to be pushed into one school. We no longer have a Montessori school in the area. With Hampton School, that was a magnet school, year-round school and our parents, they need that year-round, that year-round school, not only for childcare, but just educational needs as well. And I too am working with Mr. Hall with the EPA and I was informed that there was a cleanup, that there is going to be a cleanup around Hampton School. And I was just wondering if, I know there's two buckets of money, Guilford County Schools and then we have the federal money of the EPA and I was just wondering, why can't the two groups get together on, because the cleanup is going to cost a lot? And with the two groups going to pooling together, it seems like we would have more money, more ideas to get the cleanup going on strong around there. Another thing I was concerned about with the Hampton School of what to do with the area now. And one idea that I had was we have a lot of kids that are that are aging out of foster care. That could be a site for a building or activity or a building for those people to go to. Maybe it may be housing. I know a lot of those kids need housing. They need, they still need to grow up. They still need help. So like Mr. Hall said, maybe a community center, but also something, you know, a multi-purpose building to house aged-out foster kids and also serve our community as well. With the community center, having the kids having somewhere else to go. I appreciate your time of listening to me. I'm a very nervous person.
You did fine.
In front of people. I can talk all day long, but when I get in front of a crowd, thank God he gave me the strength to do it.
Thank you. You did fine. Thank you very much. And our final speaker, Kelly Rice.
Kelly Reese, 8209 Passafino Trail in Summerfield. Good evening. I'm Kelly Reese, a concerned parent from Northern Guilford High School and the PTSA president. Thank you for the opportunity to present Northern's Fentanyl Town Hall on February 22nd. Today, we face a massive lethal threat to the health and education of our children and loved ones. That threat is fentanyl. For the record, we have a problem at Northern. The students are enticed now more than ever to drink vape, take pills, and sell drugs in the school bathrooms, cafeterias, and parking lots. Social media platforms like Snapchat and Instagram are flooded with digital drug dealers pushing these lethal substances into our communities. This situation was brought to the attention of the PTSA's advocacy committee and we reached out to the administration to implement a GCS drug awareness program. No program existed. Looking for a solution to this crisis, the PTSA and the school improvement team joined forces to find a drug awareness and prevention program for our Nighthawk community. After months of research, we implemented a student fentanyl forum, which included a video series, discussion, and student survey. This was extremely impactful on our students. The survey revealed 88% of the students feel that there is some severity of drug use. 22% said that it was a major problem on our campus. Nationally, fentanyl is the number one killer of our nation's young adults and poisoning children under 14 at a faster rate than any other age group. According to the Guilford County Division of Public Health, over the past 10 years, Guilford County has seen a 200% increase in overdose deaths with opioids accounting for 80%. It's only a matter of time when a Guilford County student is one of those deaths. With this possibility, we continue to look for ways to inform our Northern families. An adult fentanyl town hall has been organized to include two nationally recognized presenters that were recently featured on the Today Show, Fox News, and CNN. Our next step will be to partner with Guilford County Schools to train our teachers, staff, and coaches. Parents entrust teachers and staff with the education and safety of our children. Please help them consistently accomplish this by putting Narcan in every classroom and training the faculty in how to use it. Along with the training to help staff, we need to find ways to stop drug deals and usage on campus and assist students to help pass the incredible fear they have of harm for reporting that. The Northern PTSA and the school improvement team invite the school board and superintendent to a fentanyl town hall on February 22nd and ask to continue this critical dialogue. One pill can kill. Thank you.
Thank you. We are now complete with our public comment period. There are no alternative speakers. We are now at approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. I know Ms. Erby is on her way. She's leaving one appointment and will be here probably in about 10 minutes. So we are now at naming or renaming of facilities. Alternative Board Member Deborah Napper, who is the chair of that committee.
Okay, so at our last meeting, we did vote to put to public comment name changes for two areas or two schools in our district. The first one being that you have listed here in the agenda is the Kearns Academy at High Point, at High Point Central, I apologize. And the renaming suggestion there was simply to drop the location of High Point Central. And this is not only for accuracy because Kearns Academy is no longer located at the High Point Central campus, but also for ease with our graduates. I had a couple graduates communicate to me that having that addendum on things like their transcripts and their diplomas actually causes a bit of a conflict sometimes with college registration, application, things of that nature because they're looking for an extension from High Point Central and Kearns Academy is an independent entity. To my knowledge, there were no, there was no negative community feedback at all about that suggestion. The second suggestion was the nomination to name the High Point Central High School baseball field. And this is in honor of Andrew Harper. There were also, to my knowledge, no comments from the public on this naming and we had moved to go ahead and put this on the agenda for this meeting in anticipation that should we accept this nomination, we would be able to nominate the field at the first game held in the baseball field for this year for 2023's baseball season.
Right. Is there a motion?
Move to rename or to change the name of Kearns Academy at High Point Central to Kearns Academy and to name the baseball field at Central High School.
Board members, I believe we have a public hearing prior to?
We did. We put it out for 30 days.
Well, it's, on the agenda has a public hearing to consider the nomination. So if we would just open the public hearing, there may be nobody to speak. But then after the public hearing is closed, then the motion would be appropriate.
Thank you, Jill.
Thanks. Are there any comments from the public?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right.
I just want you to have to work on her idea.
All right. Thank you, Jill.
I make a motion to rename or to name High Point Central Baseball Field for Andrew T. Harper.
Andrew T.?
Uh, no, I'm sorry.
Andrew.
The ball field is Andrew Harper.
And Andrew Harper.
Coach Andrew Harper.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favors, any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Well, that passes and the name is Andrew T. Harper Memorial Field. Thank you. All right. There's another consideration.
Yeah. Open a public hearing for Kearns.
Apologize. I didn't realize we were doing them separately. So yes. So that was for the ball field, yes?
Yes.
Okay. So now, do we have another movement for Kearns Academy at High Point, to be Kearns Academy?
Okay. First, you got to have your public hearing.
To see if there's anyone here that wants to make any comments or in opposition to that.
Are there any public comments regarding dropping the location of at High Point Central from the Kearns Academy school title?
Move to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Is there a motion?
Yes. I make a motion to modify the name of Kearns Academy at High Point Central to Kearns Academy.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. That passes unanimously.
Can I have a point of clarification?
Yes.
Will it be her whole name or will it just be Kearns Academy?
I'm looking in the documents.
At, with this consideration, it will be the Kearns Academy.
Okay. I just wanted to know because you know Doc Kearns, that's how we know her.
Right.
But I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Thank you. We are now at consideration of the District III vacancy. Is there a motion?
Motion to, I guess, approve the nomination for Michael Logan to be the District III nominee. Is that correct?
I don't know if it's to approve the recommendation made by the executive committee.
Whichever way it got it, it has to get.
Something like that. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Please use your devices to vote. That fails by a vote of five to two. Did somebody not vote?
No.
I know Kim's not here. Huh? Okay.
Yeah, there's only.
I know, but it shouldn't. Gotcha. All right. Our math is off. All right. Thank you. We are now at the consent agenda. Dr. Oakley?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. This evening's consent agenda includes the following items. Approval of the January 2023 minutes, the personnel report, 2223 budget amendments transfers report, class size update and waiver request, boundary options for Hampton Elementary and Peeler Open Elementary Schools 2324 school year, school business modernization negotiation allotment policy revisual, contractual agreement with TA Loving Callis MEG for early release work for the new visual and performing arts K5 school replacement project school, contractual agreement with Metcon Incorporated for early release work for the Brooks Global Studies Replacement School Project, lease agreement by and between the Guilford County Board of Education and Guilford County and the Board of Education 2324 meeting schedule. That concludes this evening's consent agenda for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. And I did not hear from anyone that they had any concerns or issues with anything on the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Move the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Deborah?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Chrissy?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And Deana, yes. That's approved unanimously. We are now at comments from the chair of a few things. Again, I want to say congratulations to Lisa Nolan, our employee of the month and a fantastic asset to the board. We thank you very much for your service to us and to the district. The second semester has begun and now is a great time for parents to connect their Power School parent portal accounts. The parent portal provides parents with access to grades, attendance, and other critical information about their students' progress. If you are not connected to your parent portal account, please call or email your school's data manager who can send you a personalized link. February is Black History Month and Guilford County Schools is sharing historical information on our social media accounts throughout the month. We will also be sharing the creative and thoughtful ways in which our students are learning about black history and sharing what they've learned with others. Guilford County Schools TV is also airing the documentary February 1 about the ANT 4. It airs each day at 9:00 a.m., 3:00 p.m., and 9:00 p.m. Be sure to check it out. The first two classes of students from the Dual Generation Workforce Initiative Program will graduate this week. The Kearns Academy cohort will celebrate completion of their program on Thursday, February 9th at 6:15 p.m. at the Northeast High Cohort. The Northeast High Cohort will celebrate completion on Friday, February 10th at 6:00 p.m. Adult students have been attending classes at Northeast High and Kearns Academy to become certified in information technology. We congratulate them and look forward to welcoming Cohort 2 in early March. And parents who are interested in this program should contact the Guilford Parent Academy and there will be an online information session. and there will be an online information session that will take place on February the 9th from 5:30 to 6:30. Guilford Parent Academy also has to help for parents of students transitioning to middle or high school. Information sessions will cover the registration process with advice from counselors and ways to help prepare your child for the next level. The high school session will take place from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. on Wednesday, February the 8th tomorrow, and the middle school session will take place from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. on Thursday, February 9th. Again, details are on the Guilford County Guilford Parent Academy calendar page. And Project Search will host an informational meeting for prospective students and families. Project Search is a one-year internship program for students with disabilities in their last year of high school who are seeking competitive employment. During the internship, students gain valuable work experience at High Point Medical Center or Moses Cone Hospital. An information, information session will take place on February 9th, Thursday, February 9th, from 6:00 to 7:00 at Moses Cone Hospital, or families may participate virtually. Details are available on our website. And finally, on behalf of the board, I'd like to offer my condolences to the family of former Board Member Pat Tillman on the loss of his father this weekend. Jerry Tillman was a longtime educator and state senator who will be greatly missed by all who knew him. Our thoughts, thoughts and prayers are with the Tillman family. Thank you. This concludes my remarks. We are now at comments from the Superintendent, Dr. Oakley.
Thank you. Good evening. I want to again thank our counselors for the work that they do to support our students and families with mental health concerns, student well-being, and long-range academic planning. I encourage parents to share their appreciation directly with their school counseling staff during National School Counseling Week and all year long. I was joined by GCS leaders and board members at the annual North Carolina A and T February 1 Breakfast last week. It is always a moving experience to hear the memories of those who shaped history. Students from the A and T 4 Middle College participated in the annual February 1 March on the campus of North Carolina A and T State University. This annual activity is a powerful exercise for our students to honor and remember the civil rights leaders whose brave actions helped change the world. Penn Griffin School for the Arts will also acknowledge its civil rights, rights history, marking the occasion with student performances on February 9th. Each of the school's arts focus areas will be represented, and a 7:00 p.m. performance is free and open to the public. More than 4,500 people attended the GCS Choice Showcase last week, where families engaged with school leaders and gathered information. Applications will be accepted online at GCSC dot schoolment dot net through Monday, February 20th at 5:00 p.m. Don't forget to visit your favorite schools during their open house or Tuesday tour events. February is Love the Bus Month, and our transportation staff plays a vital role in the well-being and success of our students. I want to personally thank our bus drivers, mechanics, routing staff, and supervisors for their dedication to keeping our students safe on the roads and getting them to and from school in a timely manner. We also encourage the community to show their appreciation by sending kind words to goodnews@gcsnc.com or by tagging us on social media. Congratulations to Southern High School, who has earned a College Board Advanced Placement Computer Science Female Diversity Award. The honor recognizes the school's work to engage more female students in computer science. Southern High is one of 17 schools in the state and one of 832 schools in the country to receive this award. Just last month, Jones Elementary was named the first Global Teaching Partners Language Immersion Model School. As such, Jones will be a showcase for schools that wish to implement a language immersion program and will guide the work of the Global Teaching Partners as they develop programs throughout North and South Carolina. We are proud of the staff and leadership at Jones and glad to see them being recognized as an example of greatness. This concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Oakley. We are now at committee reports. We have a report from the Policy Committee. I'll turn to the Chair of that committee, T. Diane Bellamy Small.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At our January 24th, 2023 meeting, we voted to, to bring five policy recommendations out for 30-day public comment from February the 7th to March the 9th. These policies are Policy 3104 Magnet or Optional Schools and Programs, Policy 4120 School Admission, Policy 40150 School Assignment, Policy 6300 School Transportation Services, and Policy 6530 Energy and Natural Resources Conservation and Management. The purpose of these policy revisions is to update the policies to align with state law and to support the implementation of the GCS Facilities Master Plan. I would like to remind the board that we would bring these back at our March meeting.
Thank you. We are now at action items. And our first action item is always fun. Traditional academic calendar. Dr. Oakley, anything you'd like to share?
Sure, we have remained the option A as the recommended option after reviewing public comment and conferring with the Calendar Committee. The majority of the public comments that were received addressed the need for wanting to have a two, a full two-week winter break and the 2324 calendar. However, that does push the last student day to mid-June, in the end of the second week of June. And so after reviewing the public comments, the recommendation remains the same, that option A be put forth from the Calendar Committee for 2324, 2425, and the 2526 school years. Option 1, not A, I'm sorry. Option 1, not option A, for the board's consideration tonight.
Was there a motion?
Move to, yeah, move to recommend option 1? Is that what you said? Okay. As the calendar for 23, 2023, 2024 school year.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Okay, Kim?
Sorry. Now, in option 1, does that also satisfy? I know some people commented that around that, the Easter break and that whole religious break. Because I really, I wasn't clear.
There was some comment that wanted to align the Easter week with the spring break week. That doesn't work in every case. We have to pay attention to the balance of the quarters. You want the quarters to have relatively the same number of days in terms of student academic performance. The priority of these three calendars is to maximize student learning time. And so it does not change the week of spring break to the week after. It kept it the way it was.
Right, that's, I just wanted you to talk about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Chrissy?
Could you just clarify for us the number of instructional days that we're looking at now? I know there had been concerns about the number of instructional days we have right now.
The recommended option is brings the calendar back to 180 days for students.
Great, thank you.
Diane?
Okay, Madam Superintendent, even though we do know, would you please explain why we have to start school as late as we do? Just, I mean, we just keep putting it out there, maybe somebody hears.
Sure, I mean, there's, there's pretty significant guidelines that LEAs in North Carolina have to operate around. They're listed in the memo, but we have to begin, we can't begin before the Monday closest to the August 25th, and we can't go past a certain June date unless you have charter-like flexibilities or restart status. And so that's driven by the tourism industry and has been a hot topic at the legislature for as long as I can remember. Yeah, and it's in our state law.
Okay, and, and we have put this in our legislative agenda to try to get some relief, have we not?
We have.
Okay, thank you.
And can you remind me when school would end if we did have two weeks of break in December?
My recollection is it puts the last student day on the 12th, and then the teachers would have the additional two days after that. And it falls, you know, it's, it's all about how the, the days fall within the confines. And so that year in particular, because of when the holidays fall, pushes us even farther into June. The Calendar Committee thought there would be student attendance concerns around that piece as well.
And for any who are newer to this process, can you remind who the Calendar Committee includes?
Sure, there's family members, there's faith partners, there's the Guilford County Council of PTAs, Guilford County Parent Academy. We have different support and organizations that are present. We have the GCAE, so our own Association of Educators present, as well as teachers and principals.
All right. No other questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, that passes unanimously. Option 1. We are now at surplus property Hampton Elementary School. And Jill, I'll just kind of turn it to you to just walk us through this process.
Sure. We always have such a good time when we talk about surplus property. It's always, always a treat. So as you all know, you voted to declare Hampton School and the surrounding real estate as surplus property a while ago. The statute requires you or allows you to declare something surplus if it is unnecessary and unusable for school purposes, and you do not see a current school purpose for that property. So you declared it surplus. The law then requires you to first offer it to the county commissioners in case they would like to take it for fair market value. We have done that. The county commissioners have declined the opportunity. And so the property is available for you to dispose of as you see fit. We received an, a letter from the city of Greensboro requesting that we title the property to the city of Greensboro for their use. They've got various ideas that they would have to use for the property, including park space, green space, the trail, the continuation of the greenway. And they believe that they could take that property and make it a valuable part of our community. We have no current use for it, and so we, I would suggest to you that we are currently, of course, insuring it, mowing it, maintaining it, and it is costing you money. And so I leave to you the option to consider it, and I believe we have a representative of the city who would like to speak to that issue. And ladies and gentlemen, this is our Assistant City Manager, Nasha McCray. Is that correct?
Welcome. Thank you, thank you so much. Good evening, members of the board, Madam Chair, Superintendent Oakley. My name is Nasha McCray. I'm Assistant City Manager for the city of Greensboro, and I appreciate the opportunity to come to speak with you tonight regarding this item. As was already said, and I will try to keep this very brief, I don't want to replicate what was already communicated, but it is our desire to see that this property is utilized for the continued public good, which actually is very representative of what we believe your values are as well. And so we've been working very closely, if you've heard from some of our community members from Cottage Grove Collaborative that we've worked very closely with over the years tonight. You heard their desires for the property, and it's our intent to continue to work with the community to determine what the highest and best uses are for that park space or that property is in the future. That could include the potential for additional park space. It could be some trail connectivity. It could also be some other community-type facilities that we would continue to support. We do recognize that there are some challenges that may present itself once we obtain ownership, should you approve that this evening, and we will continue to do some due diligence around the planning of that. Our protocol, again, does center around having some community engagement initially to determine that future use, and we'll commit it to doing so. So I'm happy to entertain any questions that you may have on behalf of the city. But again, thank you for your consideration of the item.
And Board members, I would recommend that any transfer to the city be as is, as the property is. And so that would be the appropriate way to do that, and I'll remind you that this property is adjacent to property also owned by the city.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we deed the property to the city of Greensboro as is and let it become their problem. That's not a part of motion, but hopefully they will, you know, be able to do right by that community.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any conversation?
Yes, Madam Chair. The Hampton property site has approximately $3 million in cost to associated and demolition, and that's why I was planning to make the recommendation and the motion, but I think my colleague, T. Diane Bellamy Small, was before saying that before I did. And thank you very much, because that is in District 7. I'm looking forward to working with you all.
Diane, then, Chrissy?
Well, what I will say is that I served that community for 10 years, and we did a lot to try to enhance and do the kinds of things to make District 1, which is what the City Council District is, a better place. We built the Gateway Gardens. We built Hayes Taylor YMCA. We helped to get the Gateway educational piece. You know, I could go on about the kinds of things that we did do. And of course, you know, we can't argue with God. He's the one that brought the tornado that, you know, tore stuff down. But what that does mean is that, you know, that provides a new opportunity for the community. We don't have to leave it barren. We don't have to leave it unsightly. And when I was on City Council, we had a heck of a time trying to get a little shack torn down that was right across from Hampton School. You know, we, we tried everything possible. So I think that in the health of our community and the fact that we all have tried to use SO funds to do things to, you know, do some improvements in our community, that for the city of Greensboro to step up and want to take over the responsibility of this, and I think it would be, Madam Chair, at some point, if Assistant Manager McCray could come back when they have more visual that they could possibly show us so that people know that we were good stewards in giving the, the property to the city of Greensboro. I think that would be, you know, something that would be, you know, in line for, for folks who are going to sit there and say, they just gave that, that property away to the city. No, we are transferring our stewardship to the city of Greensboro, and our expectations are that you will do right by that community.
Thank you, Chrissy.
And my question sort of piggybacks on, on her statements. I think I already know the answer to this, but for the sake of financial transparency for the community, I wanted to sort of ask. First of all, I love all of the ideas that we heard from the community about a wellness center, community center, a place for kids to be able to be in their own community and engaged. I think all of that is wonderful. My question is around if we were originally able to offer this to the county commissioners for fair market value and they turned that down. Is there a reason that we are wanting to transfer it to the city of Greensboro without any financial money, any money changing hands?
Right, so an appraisal of the property that we did found it to be of relatively low value because of the cost of, let's say, making, making the property pristine for other uses. And so if you took the cost to bring the property to that position, the cost of maintaining the property over the year, insuring the property, mowing the property, dealing with the break-ins and other things that vacant buildings inevitably bring, and continuing water damage and repairing roofs and things like that, I think you could make a very defendable case that this is fiscally responsible.
I would like to thank City Councilwoman Sharon Hightower for being so diligent about this, and I, I do know that vacant property, boarded-up property, property that's been damaged over the years has a profound negative impact on community. And, and it really just contributes to all of the things that I, that the speaker said tonight, the poor health of the community, because, you know, just all kinds of things sort of habitate, habit, you know, in, in abandoned buildings. I know when in downtown Greensboro, on the south side area where they started, or I think it's that part, when they started to doing a lot of renovations, possums and all kinds of things were just running rampant rats and stuff like that in the community, because they had been just, you know, sort of boarded up in these abandoned buildings. And so we just have no idea the negative impact that this has had over the years on the community. And so, so I think Councilwoman Hightower for that. And I do think the Superintendent, I don't know if you have the, some of the renditions or ideas and stuff, but they were pretty exciting. And we know that those enhancements, again, impact your again, impact your overall well-being, so we're excited to see and know more.
Could I, could I ask if Ms. Reed can just tell us what does this mean as far as GCS is concerned, as far as?
So as far as GCS is concerned, we surplus the property because we knew we did not have need for the asset at this point in time, our master plan did not support that need either, so this is a viable use for both the community and also for us as a district.
Okay, do you happen to know off the top of your head what our costs have been up to this point, you're talking about five years?
Yeah, so five, yeah, since 2018, we've been, you know, the initial cost that we had to board up and continue surveilling, constant going out and monitoring, mowing the lawns, and making sure that we're, you know, in co-compliance, you know, annually it could be, you know, 15,000 a year, but it's more so the cost burden and also the blight in the community, and for us to improve that site, the building is, is, you know, beyond repair in some cases, so we really want to make sure that we can support the community's need, and also make sure that we're, you know, building something that the community can actually use.
Thank you. All right, if there's no further discussion, we have a motion, and it's been seconded, if those in favor of the motion say aye, aye, any opposed? All right, well, that passes unanimously, we are now at Policy 4400 at student attendance.
I make a motion to adopt the revisions to Policy 4400, student attendance.
Any discussion?
There were no comments that were received during the public comment period from December 13 through the 12th, so the revision is needed to align the board's policy to state law.
Thank you, any dis, okay, if there's no discussion, all those in favor say aye, aye, any opposed? All right, that passes by a vote of six to one, seven to one, Ms. Erby's here. We're at, now at Policy 8305, Ms. Bellamy Small, Federal Grant Administration.
To, I make a motion to adopt the revisions to Policy 8305, Federal Grant Administration as presented.
Any discussion?
No comments were received during the public comment period from December 13 through the 12th, this revision is needed to align the board's policy to new federal regulations.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, any opposed? All right, that passes by a vote of seven to one, and we are now at closed session, I believe we have one, turning to Board Member Napper.
I move that we go into closed session to preserve the attorney-client privilege and to discuss personnel matters protected by state law.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye, aye, any opposed? All right, we're going into closed session, will we be in there long?
We will not.
All right.
I'd like to turn to Board Member T. Diane Bellamy Small.
I'd like to make an addendum to the personnel report and make a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation for an administrative appointment to the chief of technology.
Give us a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, that passes unanimously. Dr. Oakley?
Yes, I would like to congratulate Michael Lockett, who will be serving as chief technology officer here in Guilford County.
Thank you. We are now at Board Member comments, and I will start with you, Ms. Bellamy Small.
Thank you. As has been said, this is Black History Month, and there's a lot of rich material that is on almost any channel you want to look at. I highly recommend that people read or watch 1619. It is by far one of the best. It is by far one of the best historical references that connects past, present, and future. So, you know, as we look at celebrating Black History Month, we need to, you know, actually look at what's happening in our society because it's not reflective of celebrating what African-Americans have contributed and mean to this country. I also want to say to the Tillman family that I'm very sorry for their loss, for the time. Pat and I actually, I think, came on board at the same time, and so I had a chance to know him as my seatmate. And I attended his mother's funeral, and, you know, when we put aside our political differences, we found out that everybody's a human being, and everybody got a mom and daddy and children. And we need to reach out and let them know that we care. The Ascension unveiling for the Downtown Greenway is tomorrow at 4:00 p.m. at the intersection of East Gay City Boulevard to Marl Boulevard. And there will be a reception afterwards at the historical Magnolia House that sits up on Gall Street, right above where this new piece of public art is getting ready to be unveiled. I want to commend all of our staff for the GCS Choice Showcase. They did a fabulous job, as they've done in the past. I think everybody was excited to be back, you know, able to show what we have to offer our children. And we do have a lot to offer our kids, and I hope that parents will, you know, do their due diligence and sign up and ask questions and have their child in the best educational setting for them. I do have one request, and it's a hard request. I did talk to a parent who was from High Point, and she said that it was, you know, a challenge to have to come to Greensboro. And I don't know if there's a way for us to do a mini showcase or something in High Point because we are constantly hearing, you know, that High Point kids don't get what everybody else gets. And I understand that that's not true, but we also need to be able to bring activities closer to them, just as we're doing the board meetings over there, I think, when it's possible. And I know that's a big ask, but if we could at least consider it, to have something closer similar to this for our High Point students and families, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Chrissy?
Thank you. I didn't write anything down tonight, so I have to kind of go off the cuff. First of all, I want to express profound sadness about some of the things that have happened in our community, and not just our community, but all over the country and all over the world. You know, last month, we talked about the terrible murders that we had in High Point. And just hearing things daily about what's happening in our communities, with our students in our schools, it just breaks my heart. These are our babies, and I hope that, you know, the communities continue to try to work together, work with the schools. The school counselors that we talked about earlier are so very important to really helping support our kids. On the total other end of the spectrum, I had the pleasure this morning of going to Allen J. Prep for their Touring Tuesday, and it was the most amazing experience. I was literally on a high all day at work because of what I experienced at that school this morning, just getting to see the engagement of the students, the passion of the teachers. The principal, Dr. Wheat, is amazing, and they are just doing incredible, incredible things there. So, thank you for inviting me out to that. I'm continuing to work my way through all of the districts to schools and get out to see people. Finally, I've been very vocal in general about my opinions that a school board should not be political. I just, I don't think politics and school board really mix. We obviously have a District III vacancy that we're working to try to fill, and I really hope that we are able to come together as a board and as a school community to come to a resolution very quickly so that we can get representation for the families, the students, the schools, everybody who's in District III. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda?
First, my condolences go to the Tillman family. It's always a major, you know, someone that are important in your life. So, that's, I do have a heartfelt wish and prayer that they get through this difficult time. I also went to the choice, and that was awesome. We got to improve it a little more navigating. It's a little challenging, but I know that we're going to work on that. I do have an issue with policy, and I'm not allowed to discuss it when we put the policies out, and I'm not allowed to discuss it when I go to the policy committee. So, the only time I'm allowed to ask a question is one after it's been put out to the public. And clearly, we have not stated why we changed the policy because there's no discussion on it. We put out five policies tonight. We called out numbers. We called out 3104 magnet options, schools and programs. We called out Policy 420, school admission. We called out Policy 4150, school assignment. We called out 63 student transportation services. We called out 6530 energy natural resources. Zero discussion on why those policies came up. Zero discussion on what changed. And every one of these significantly impact our students. We are getting zero comments back on any policies put out because our students and our parents are not aware of what we're putting out. When you roll out numbers like that, that means nothing. Before the policy committee decided to change the process, every policy was discussed that was being put out for comment so that the parents might have some clue as to what these policies are about and why they were changed. Now, we have Policy 3104. I want you to look at the level of blue on that policy. Does any, but this is a major policy. This is a policy that we just had 5,000 people go to. But this addresses, it's a very important policy. Did we say one word as to why we changed it? Parents, go read the major blue. I'm not saying it's right. I'm not saying it's wrong. But I am saying it had major changes. You need to know why. Again, we have Policy School Admission. Again, now, this one, it doesn't have too much, but it could have, it has some blue in there, and it could be a significant issue. I'm not saying it is. I'm not saying it's not. Okay, we got 4150 School Assignment. All right. Again, we got some major, there is a major change here. We are going to do something that we have never done in this district before. Again, I am not saying it's right. I am not saying it's wrong. However, I will read it. "To support innovative diversity and equitable access, the board may define certain geographical areas as a choice zone. Within a choice zone, all students with priority access to nearby magnet and option schools. Within the geographical boundary, families residing within a choice zone must apply for their preferred school options through the choice application process. Families residing within a choice zone do not have an assigned homeschool policy or homeschool." Now, this is a significant change. I'm not saying it's right. I'm not saying it's wrong. I'm saying it deserves some discussion. I'm saying that parents, community, and everyone should have an opportunity to understand this is a major change. Not there again, don't have an opinion, but they need to know. School bus routes. There again. Not saying it's right. May pretty much 100% agree with it, but people need to know. And then we got the energy. Now, so what happens in all this? You got these significant changes out here. They throw these numbers out, and everybody's not paying one bit of attention. We have not been getting any comments. So, now, and I get zero opportunity to comment. I cannot comment on when it goes out. I cannot come, I go to all the policies, by the way, go to all the policy committees. And I'm not allowed to comment there unless I am asked to comment, unless someone gives me the privilege to comment. So, then what happens? These policies come back, okay? They come back, and then everybody goes, well, there's no comments. There's no comments, okay? Well, that's because people have no clue they should be commenting. So, when we discussed the calendar, the calendar, you know, we had a full discussion on it. We got 194 comments, 194 comments because we discussed it, and people knew that was a major part of policy and a major issue. So, I would like some way to ask questions before someone comes back and says, well, there's no comments. There's no comments because no one knows anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Ellen?
Thank you. We do work that is local here, but we know that it has wider reach and it intersects with work that is much broader, including work earlier this evening that occurred at the NC Senate with the approval of Bill 49. This is part of a string of state legislation that's focused on the LGBTQ plus community. It centers on curriculum in kindergarten through fourth grade, but it has a much wider impact than that. It will not give loving and supportive parents any rights that they don't already have, and it will not do anything to impact the sexuality or gender identity of any North Carolina students. But what it will do is limit the language and instruction of trained teachers. What it will do is make LGBTQ plus students feel marginal and institutionally bullied. What it will do is decrease the public space for them to live into the fullness of who they are. What it will do, as Kendra Johnson of Equality North Carolina has said, will have a serious impact on the mental health and well-being of queer and trans youth. And what it will do is make LGBTQ plus children and youth more vulnerable to harm, whether from others or even from themselves. And so, I want to use some time tonight to say to our LGBTQIA students and teachers here in Guilford County that you are seen and known and supported in this district, and I know that I am not alone in saying so, and want to say that I'm committed to doing all that is possible from this particular local seat to join the countless others in making our schools here safe and inclusive for you to live as fully as yourselves. And that brings me to work that is local and work that has dominated much of our public conversation over these last months, and that is the vacancy in District III. Filling that vacancy is an appointment, and I'm in an elected position. And that is a position that does, in fact, include representation of District III along with the whole of our county. The majority of those that elected me expect our board members to demonstrate the ability to be collaborative, committed to the common good, and inclusive and supportive of all of our students and teachers, regardless of race, sexuality, or background. And I know that there are many District III Republicans also committed to these values. I believe that Pat Tillman, who held this seat, was certainly one. And so, I want to be clear that I will only use my elected trust to vote to affirm a nominee that I am confident is committed to what is just and good and safe and inclusive and affirming for every one of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins.
Well, I would continue from my colleague. As far as the District III seat, I received several phone calls from employees, administrators, former administrators, and from the community, and they have asked me not to vote for the person of choice. They are my constituents, and they gave me sound reason why not to, and I'm going to go with my constituents. There is a Black History Program that will be held at Harrison on Thursday at 2:00. Please feel free to attend, take your lunch break, and enjoy the time at Harrison. Happy Schools Counseling Week. As a social worker, the counseling and social worker work very closely together, and I want to congratulate them on this week. I continue to work on the debt, the debt as far as the food for the kids. So, we still have a debt now, I think, of around $40,000. And I ask everyone that's listening to us tonight, if you can please deep, dig deep or just a little bit in your pocket, and please send a donation to our Food Nutrition so we can get that you're taken care of. As far as the policy, as a former policy chair, each board member has the opportunity to voice their opinion about the policy. There is a part when we vote that asks, are there any discussion? If you have a problem or concern, that's your time that you can discuss that issue. So, once again, every board member has the opportunity to make a decision and to discuss any question they have about a policy, whether the new policy or whether the policy that's being aligned with the state law. That concludes my announcements. Thank you.
Ms. Napper?
Okay. First off, I would like to stop and thank everyone that responded to the calendar call and had feedback about our school calendars. Thank you for validating that you do indeed pay attention when we speak. We appreciate it. Northwestern Guilford High School, new state championships for wrestling. Congratulations. It was a well-fought match, and we brought home a new title to Guilford County. I would say go Vikings, but I would probably get in a lot of trouble. Northern Guilford High School, probably where I would get in a lot of trouble. To back up what was said in the public comments earlier, there will be a fentanyl town hall discussion held on Wednesday, February 22nd, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. in the auditorium at Northern High at 7101 Spencer Dixon Road. Please do feel free to attend, especially those who have voiced safety and security concerns in the high school in the past. Also, we'd like to welcome Dr. Oakley for her connect at Northern High School on the 9th here in just a couple days at 5:30. And I would like to invite there again, everyone in District 5 and in the northern area to come and discuss any concerns that you have. Bring them up to Dr. Oakley. Concerns, it will definitely take compliments if you got them. And come and talk. This is our time to have the superintendent's ear, our time to express what we need to her. And I am very happy to say that I feel, at least so far, very hurt. So, we do talk a lot about Black History Month, and we do usually preface it by saying, let's celebrate Black History Month. I have permission from a historian by the name of Heather Richardson Cox to share her notes as of February 1st, February 1, 2023. It's going to take a minute, but I promise you it's worth it. On February 1st, 1862, in the early days of the Civil War, the Atlantic Monthly published Julia Ward Howe's Battle Hymn of the Republic. Anyone else sing that as a hymn when they were a kid? Just me? Summing up the cause of freedom for which the United States troops would soon be fighting. "Mine eyes have seen the glory of the coming of the Lord," it began. "He is tramping out the vintage where the grapes of wrath are stored. He has loosed the faithful lightning of his terrible and swift sword, and his truth is marching on." Howe had written the poem on a visit to Washington with her husband. Approaching the city, she had reflected sadly that there was little she could do for the United States. She couldn't send her menfolk. Her husband was too old. Her children were too young, and with a toddler, she didn't have enough time to volunteer to pack stores for the field hospitals. "I thought of the women of my acquaintance whose sons or husbands were fighting the great battle, the women themselves serving in the hospitals, busying themselves with the work of the sanitary commission, and she felt that there was nothing that she could give to that cause. One day, she and her husband toured the troops surrounding the city and mingled with the troops on the way home, and they sang a popular song, and a friend challenged Howe to write more uplifting words for the marching song. That night, Howe slept soundly. She woke before dawn, and lying in bed, began thinking about the tune that she had heard the soldiers singing the day before. She recalled, 'As I lay waiting for the dawn, the long lines of the desired poem began to twine themselves in my mind, and with a sudden effort, I sprang out of bed, found in the dimness an old stump of a pen, and scrawled the verses almost without looking at the paper.'" Howe's hymn captured the tension of Washington, D.C. during the war as soldiers protected the government from invasion, stung in camps around the city to keep invaders from the United States Capitol. And it goes on to list the frames of the song. "The battle hymn became the anthem of the Union during the Civil War. And exactly three years after it appeared in the Atlantic Monthly on February 1st of 1865, President Abraham Lincoln signed the joint resolution of Congress passing the 13th Amendment and sending it off to the states for ratification. The amendment provided that neither slavery nor involuntary servitude, except as punishment for a crime whereof the party has been duly convicted, shall exist within the United States or any place subject to their jurisdiction." It gave Congress the power to enforce that amendment, and this was the first amendment that gave power to the federal government rather than limiting. Three-quarters of the states ratified the 13th Amendment by December 6, 1865. It goes on very long. It goes on to describe the joy on the floor when that was signed. And it's, "Indiana Congressman George Julian later recalled, 'It seemed to me that I had borne into a new life and that the world was overflowing with beauty and joy, while I was inexpressibly thankful for the privilege of recording my name on so glorious a page of the nation's history. But the hopes of the moment crumbled within a decade. Almost a century later, on February 1st, 1960, David Richmond, Franklin McCain, Azalea Blair Jr., and Joseph Neal set out to bring those dreams back to life when they sat down on stools at the F.W. Woolworth Company Department Store Lunch Counter in Greensboro, North Carolina. The men were first-year students at North Carolina Agricultural and Technical State University who wanted to find a way to combat the segregation under which Black Americans lived in the 1880s. Woolworths would sell products to the students but would not serve them food. So, the men forced the issue by sitting down and ordering coffee and donuts. They sat quietly while the white waitress refused to serve them, and the store manager ignored them. They came back the next day with a larger group. This time, television cameras covered the story. By February 3rd, there were 60 men and women sitting. By February 5th, there were 50 white male counter protesters." By February fifth, there were fifty white male counter protesters. By March, the sit-in movement had spread across the South to bus routes, museums, art galleries, and swimming pools. In July, after profits dropped dramatically, the store manager of the Greensboro Woolworths asked for Black employees to put on street clothes and order food at the counter. They did and they were served. Desegregation in public spaces had begun and it was begun here. Exactly sixty-three years later, February first, twenty twenty-three, Tyree Nichols' family laid to rest their twenty-nine-year-old son in Memphis, Tennessee. He was so severely beaten by police officers on January seventh, allegedly for a traffic violation, that he died three days later. Also, the College Board released the official curriculum for a new advanced placement course in African-American studies. In January, Florida Governor Ron DeSantis complained that the course was indoctrination and lacked educational value and is contrary to Florida law and said he would ban it. The version released today has been stripped of information about Black feminism, the queer experience, incarceration, and the Black Lives Matter movement. Mine eyes have seen the glory. Education is our responsibility. And without thorough education, we cannot begin to understand the past or heal the wounds that has been caused. Rest in power, Tyree Nichols.
Thank you. Kim Erby.
Good evening, everyone. I had the opportunity to go to our Capitol. And actually, it was a lot of fun to be able to walk through the halls of the Capitol in the House. I didn't make it over to the Senate because that's a lot of walking, by the way, just to let you know. And it was a rainy day, so I just opted to hang out in the House and knock on a couple of doors. But I did have a meeting with Kathy Manning and she was very excited about that to present our legislative agenda and the work and our responsibility, actually, with the S of dollars. So I do appreciate the staff putting together those packets that I was able to distribute. So I actually had a chance to knock on Ayanna Pressley's door. I met with Senator Bobby Scott, though, because he came to the conference. I actually went to see Marjorie Greene in her office because she was right across the hall from Ayanna Pressley. So that was great. And of course, I had to stop by Hakeem Jeffries' office to give him a shout out for his new position as well and to sign my name in his book and hopefully he'll give me a call. Because we, you know, work together, you know, in New York City. So I'm hoping that he'll remember the little people. Deborah Ross, I got a chance to stop by her office. Valerie Vouchet, Greg Murphy. And Alma Adams was actually in her office. And when I said, I'm here from Guilford County, she comes running out of her office. Hey, you're here from Guilford County? I'm like, yeah, you know, to tell, you know. So that was a good experience, just walking through and getting lost, of course, and reading all the numbers and had, I definitely got my steps in while I was in D.C. So I hope that we can do more of that work. I think the more you go, the more you become very comfortable at going into someone's office and giving them that cold speech and just interacting with their staff. They were very helpful, especially I asked one of the assistants, okay, now where, where's this person? Where's that person? So one young man was very nice to write down all the offices where I needed to go. But they're renovating, they're always renovating in the house. There's always furniture downstairs, you know, that they're moving around and, and moving people around. So it's a very busy place, but it was, I felt very comfortable walking around the house and just knocking on doors and just saying, hey, thank you for the S of dollars. This is what we're doing in Guilford County. And most people were very happy. A couple of people, you know, like, oh, you're here. Thanks for coming by. So it definitely was a good experience for me. So I hope that's something that we as a board will have the opportunity to do to interact with our legislation on the federal level. To the Guilford County Council of PTAs, I just wanted to let you know that I am assigned to you as the board member. So I'm hoping that I will hear from the president or from someone from the Guilford County Council of PTAs to be in contact with me so that I can be invited to one of your meetings so that we can connect. The Winter Symposium actually is coming up for the North Carolina PTA on February eighteenth. And it will take place in Charlotte, North Carolina at Mallard Creek High School from nine A.M. to two thirty P.M. I also had the opportunity to go see nice white parents down at the Greensboro Creative Arts Center. And one of our students was actually in that play, I believe. His, I want to shout out Emmanuel Alexander Lee Williams. He was great in his part and in his role and it was great. And I met his mom, Robin, as well. And they were very proud to be a part of Guilford County Schools, actually. And, you know, I just want to give him a shout out to know that our kids are just doing some other things in the community. He was in The Wiz, he was in The Invisible Dragon. So I made sure I got his autograph. So this way, when he becomes famous, I'll have, you know, some memorabilia. And his mom was like, wow, you want his autograph? I'm like, yeah, let me get, get his autograph. Of course, that's why I'm here, you know, to interact and to be in the community. The governor's office will be, have a Black Student Leaders Governor's Page Program for high school students, June nineteenth to the twenty-second. So now it's time to apply for that opportunity. And I will close with that I was very excited to participate in the, the fair, our Magnet Choice Fair. It's always good to see our principals, see the staff, see the parents, you know, coming in very excited. See the students coming in very excited, everyone getting lost. But I actually enjoyed getting on the yellow bus. I had no idea how fancy those buses were, you know. The kids have a little three K, gets a little booster seat, you know, and they strap them in and everything. I'm like, I can, this is really nice, good upgrade. So I don't know where that came from, but that's a major upgrade from the yellow buses that I think we had in the past. Those kids are riding lovely, like luxury seats on the new buses. So that's good to see, you know, the children were excited. I was excited. I hung out on that bus for a little while because the seat was comfortable. So we're doing good work, right? And that's what it's about. Again, you know, I'm a big supporter of our community schools and I understand the concern about opening the district up, up to choice. But it can be done in a great way and it offers a lot of opportunities for students. But students definitely should always have a homeschool attached to their address. Whether they choose their homeschool or not, I can understand that. But everyone should still have an assigned school where they don't have to worry about having to choose a school, especially on the elementary school level. I definitely understand opening up choice on the high school level, opening up the district more to the high school students to have that opportunity. But I do understand the concern about not having a homeschool on the elementary school level. But I do understand that, that we're trying to get to an equity place and give people more choice as well. And parents are more informed than, than what we think. And just because we don't see comments sometimes, because sometimes it's just not a priority for some people. So it's always okay for us not to get some comments because even that sends a message as, as well that maybe people are okay with the changes that are happening. So then there's no need to comment on everything. It's obvious that the calendar was the hot topic in this district with seventy-two pages worth of comments. So that was obvious, what was on people's mind. Maybe because of the timing of when we're putting out policy and competing with the calendar that people don't have time to comment on everything. So maybe that's something we need to think about when we're putting out things for public comment. So this way, it won't compete with the calendar or things that people are most interested in. Because if I comment about the calendar, I really don't have time to read all the policy stuff that we're putting out. And I can understand why we don't get that many comments. So again, we did a great job at the Choice Fair and, you know, support, you know, your neighborhood schools as much as possible. Our neighborhood schools are doing good work. And just because you have a choice, it does not mean you still cannot attend your neighborhood school. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. So while you were hobnobbing with big policymakers, I was hanging out with Casey and the Sunshine Band at High Point University. He is seventy-two now, but, you know, a little different than what I remember. But I, I knew the words to the songs and it was good. It was a lot of fun. So thank you to High Point University. It was just packed full of community folks and students and, and Vice Chair of the County Commissioners, Carl Vina Foster, for the invitation. My condolences also for the Tillman family. It was just a pleasure serving with Pat Tillman over the time that we did. And had a couple of opportunities to exchange some barbs and laughs with Senator Tillman. He was, he was a very kind and delightful person. And so very sorry for the loss in their family. I just want to say a little bit, I know a lot has been said about Black History Month, but I think the need for it is still complex and people don't understand that. And I've said this before, but I want to say it again. In seventeen ninety, the Naturalization Act, right? We cede our first Congress in seventeen ninety. In their second session, the first act, they spell out the Naturalization Act, how you can become a citizen. And this is what they say. Any alien being a free white person could apply for citizenship as long as he or she lived in the United States for at least two years and in the state where the application was filed. It said, "The law excluded indentured servants, free blacks, and slaves who were regarded as property and not persons." Now, we built a nation, you know. We've been building a nation for a century before that, from seventeen ninety to eighteen sixty-five. It's about a hundred and seventy-five years. And that means every institution, every sector, every system, from education and its norms and values and epistemology and axiology, all of the ways that it will be organized and structured, education, healthcare, business, government, petroleum, energy, international affairs, governmental affairs, and politics has been shaped by the orientation and the influences of one group of people. And even Florida in nineteen seventy-four, because of this, actually passed legislation that said you must integrate Latinx, Hispanic Studies, and African-American Studies in the curriculum. But we never institutionalized that, so it was so easy to undo. All you had to do is pass another policy saying, nope, you can't do that anymore because we never really did it. So policies don't necessarily change systems and structures. And so the fact that we still have to have this conversation, the fact that in Guilford County schools, there's not an indicator of student success where students of color are not on the bottom, has a lot to do with this history. So this isn't about the invisibilization of other groups of people. It is, it is barely attempting to say that there is one history. And so much of that history has been left out and has been told from only one perspective. And so it's, Black History Month is inadequate. Native American Heritage Month is inadequate. Hispanic celebrations, all of those are inadequate. And I'm afraid we're regressing. But I hope that we will persevere through the efforts to deny the multicultural and multiracial society that we live in. It's, it's not going to change, but we can make it very difficult for this country to move forward. So, so thank you for your comments tonight. Thank you, staff and everyone for being here. Thank you for our public comments. And I will now entertain a motion.
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you and good.